So I'm going to call this pre-session to order. It's October 15th, 2024. And this is very informal for the people here. It's just a way for our councilors to talk to each other, give updates on the meetings that they are, boards and commissions that they are liaisons to, and what's going on. So we'll do a little call real fast. Joan Peck, no titles in this. Shakita Darman.
Marsha Martin.
Sandy Seaton.
Francis Jackie.
Don Quixote.
Theresa Moyne.
Eugene May.
Earl DeMoses.
Sean McCall.
Erin Rodriguez.
Suzie Valgoferi.
And Diane Christ is ill tonight, so she won't be here. So we're just going to do the updates. And at the very last minute, I have gone send out Diane's updates through email because she's around here. So you may not get them until tomorrow.
Okay.
So I'm going to start in what are these things? These are... The Metro Mayor's in their meetings have said that they are getting a lot of very angry people at their meetings and that councilors are becoming angry with each other. And so they, the head, the chair of Metro Mayor's reached out and said, anything that we can do to going into this toxic time after the election possibly, of how do we treat our residents? How do we talk to each other? So I went online, and you don't have to follow this, but it's basically one of them is about intelligence to reclaim civility. And I think as leaders in our city, we need to show how we interact with each other and with our residents. So it is, this isn't appointed of anybody. I'm just going to pass it out. You don't have to follow them or anything, but they're just, one of them's use your emotional intelligence to reclaim civility. And then promoting civility in our public spaces are prior for local officials. How do we talk to each other? How do we talk to residents? And...
This is very inappropriate. Thank you. It was like you read my hat. And you're like, ah!
I don't know how to respond to this.
So I'm going to give you one more hour. So I'm just going to put them here. And if you want them, grab them. And I'm going to keep them in your back pocket. You want them?
Yeah. Just, we can pass them around. If anybody wants to put up one or two.
Yeah, two. Oh, sorry.
One?
Two of them.
There's two of them.
There's two of them.
But...
Yeah.
I thought I had six.
But if you don't have it.
Here you go. So thank you for that. And anybody who's here just to listen, here's an agenda. So I see we have public. And the other thing...
Put it over there.
Sure, go ahead. There just comes. So we're here to talk about minimum wage. And the reason that I wanted to talk about minimum wage is that I think it's important for us to hear each other on council on what we think about it. What we want to do is really too late, and thank goodness, to do anything about it for January of 2025. And I did tell the commissioner, who kept emailing me about, what are you going to decide? What are you going to decide? That, you know, businesses in the cities include, never even done their budgets for next year. So for us to change something in that budget, for me, is not, it's not an appropriate thing to do this year. But I think that, Suzie, why don't you tell what you just told me about why this one business?
Oh, yes. So, because I had called the mayor asking why this was on the agenda to discuss. So I had some questions. Since we're not making a decision, it's just really to kind of get feel for where everybody's at with this. So I had an opportunity to speak with the owner of, bikes and, what's her name? Spice and Bikes.
Spice and Bikes.
Yes. And she was at the Sustainable Resilient Longmont Electric Vehicle Event. And she was mentioning how with the state rolling out the rebates for their EVs, she has to wait several months before she gets reimbursed for that. So that has added an additional constraint. And so as we were looking at, okay, what are, you know, as we are making decisions that have potential impacts to business owners, how can we balance what are some of the nuances? What are some of the challenges that they're already experiencing? And making sure that what we do doesn't provide an added burden, but how we can kind of support that? One of the things that I wanted to, so that raised some concerns to me. So then immediately after I left that, I went over to the state of Colorado to talk to them about what are they doing to streamline the process? There's a lot of red tape happening. I believe they're making some changes that will be occurring in January that will allow them to get their funds faster and, or some kind of grant opportunities. I don't have the specific details, but I did collect her information. So, you know, I said, as this starts rolling out, please contact me. And I gave her my information so we can address that. But, so those are, those are some of the nuances that I wanted to consider.
At the coffee with council that Marsha and I attended, there were quite a few folks that came and spoke. It was right after the community event the night before. And so they, they were feeling that this, it had been tough enough to get through COVID. And then they were getting through the situation where they were at a point where they felt like they were kind of finally kind of getting somewhat of their two legs back underneath them. And this sort of conversation comes up. And they're, you know, they're finding hard to think that they would be able to survive this one. And it's, we've seen before, you know, downtown, we've got this vibe in downtown. And we've seen before some economic downturns that have really hurt the community. And so, you know, a couple of them were business owners that just felt like they didn't want to see that again. They felt like things were finally getting to a place where people could actually run a business downtown and be successful.
I reached out to Big Bella from the Latino Voices. And this made me kind of sad because I said, can you get a group together of business owners of the Latina population as well as residents? I would like to talk to them about the minimum wage. What do you think it's going to do? And he called me back. He said, Joan, I can't get anybody to do it because they're telling me, they're going to do what they want anyway. They don't pay any attention to us. And that made me really sad because that's not true. So you said, I'm still trying. So it's going to be a while before I look over one of their meetings and just... I'm sorry. Marsha?
I think that, and obviously we missed the window this year.
Yes.
And everyone is kind of breathing a sigh of relief that we missed the window this year. And I think doing it in the early presidential election was probably a bad plan from the start. I think that the county commissioners took the wrong approach. They tried to put a forcing function on us by saying, we're going to do it. And you guys are going to follow on with the rest. I strongly believe that we have to raise the minimum wage in the interest of social justice. And everybody, you know, it's ironic that we have civility letter here because the letters that I've been receiving, and they're pretty much the same that everyone's been receiving. You know, if you just take away some of the civility words, they're saying, my business won't survive unless I can exploit the people on the bottom and pull the wool over the people of, over the eyes on the next tier, you know, the second lowest group of people because otherwise they won't be making enough more. Well, you know, there's no justice in that. It's wrong. But we have to find a way to make the change happen in a way that will be acceptable. Because we all know from studying history and economics that there have been times when we had better balance between what things cost people and what they earned. And so we know that businesses work that way. And what we've had is a period of time in business where profits were squeezed kind of up to the top, like a toothpaste tube. And we need to change that. But I think what we need to do is change it from the bottom up. We need to build in one of those little pieces of tubes, you know, that you put on the bottom of your toothpaste so that you roll it up. That means training our businesses so that they understand that they're going to, they're, all those letters say, in five years, it's going to be $25 an hour. And they're assuming that all the other factors in their business are held constant. Well, that's not what's going to happen, you know? So I think the city doesn't have enough money. My original idea was that we should teach them. You know, we don't have the money to run the Longmont University for the next few years, if ever. But I think that we need to put, get progressive businesses together and find ways for businesses to support each other and have institutions that will, that will help. You know, the large primary employers already know that the economics of a higher minimum wage are favorable to their businesses. And so, okay, you guys, if this happens and this economy gets hotter so that your businesses drag more money out of the rest of the economy and into Longmont, which is where the primary employer is for, then that means, you know, you need to pay the piper a little bit and find ways to help these mom and pop businesses that feel like they're going to die. Not die. You know, need to find, need to find ways to help them by, you know, collective business promotion. You know, advertising is a big cost for a small business. Well, if that gets collectivized the way the DDA, for example, tries to do, or as Longmont tries to do, if those get more effective, then, then those businesses lose a cost and so they can pay it as wage instead. We need to, you know, we need to spend some time, probably two years, not long, two years reeducating our businesses and changing the business culture so that it becomes possible. That's what I think. Because I think we should be ashamed of ourselves if we don't get it done.
So we are not changing councilors this year. We're on the same group of people. I think that overall, it's a good group. And I agree that we need to raise, we should, along with the county raising the minimum wage. The $25 an hour does not even have to be part of the conversation. That is exactly what the commissioner said. You know, even though they didn't adopt that. Lockheed is waiting to see what we do. So they didn't do anything. But I do think we need to address it. And we have a year. Because next year, we should think about what we're going to do and let, let the business community know if you agree that we are going to consider raising that minimum wage so that they can prepare their budgets. But I did hear from Kimberly Navey when we went to the site selection dinner that she's very nervous that some of her small restaurants have said that they would just go to Frederick or Firestone. Will they do that? I don't know. Is that a threat? I don't know. They don't know. And I believe that could happen this year. Also, if Frederick or Firestone or both get DDA's of their own, which would help them in a district to, for marketing or whatever. And if they don't raise their minimum wage, that would be a selling point for someone if they go to a different DDA where the minimum wage is static. So I guess what I think that we should do is really think about it this year and how we want to go about it. Because I do think next year we have to, we have to really make a decision by October. So last...
At the end of the month, at the Consortium of Cities, we have other topics to discuss there. But one of the topics is this. And I just want to make sure I'm giving flavor of this, that we're not going to make any decisions at this point before the end of the year. So that just add in general, it's there. And anything else you'd like me to make sure I report?
It's not, you know, it's the kind of sense of us. It's vibrant.
I bet I understand in general that we were kind of, you know, we're still trying to feel it out.
Well, me personally, I don't think we're trying, I'm not trying to fill it out. I think we need to get, see what kind of system that we can help the businesses. Because I too believe that we need to increase minimum wage.
Yes, yeah, I think that.
I think that's the main thing that, do we agree upon increasing minimum wage? But what we also need to agree upon, how are we going to do it?
Yeah, that's, that's...
And so... I know from the businesses that I have talked to that had translated to me that they're looking at that $25 an hour.
I know.
And that's scary. It's absolutely scary. And we do have businesses within our city who are hanging on by a thread. And just the thought of that is scary for them and almost make them look elsewhere. Whether they move or not, it's still an option for them if they do that. But we also want our community to know that we are supporting them. And we also want our businesses to know that we're supporting them as well. So how do we create this system that will be as equitable and fair for our citizens and also our businesses? You know, I know you were saying, Marsha, to educate the businesses. I think businesses know how to increase wages. It's how they can do it and be sustainable and still be operational. And be able to save money into byproduct. And then we're charging for recycling and compost, all these things. So, I mean, but yet, even me myself can't even afford any more than my regular essentials of rent, insurance is sky high, and food is sky high. So with the, with the wages that most people earn here in Colorado, let alone Boulder County, is not sustainable. So I know for myself, I think it's a must that we have to increase minimum wage. But we also have to sit down and figure out with the chamber and other businesses and also the community, how can we create a system where it could be sustainable, where we are supporting as many as we can in an equitable way?
Erin, do you have anything to add?
I just, when we discussed this last time, I thought you had made a motion. I thought we had a motion that we would be having a kind of a roundtable or some kind of chamber or local business, fishbowl with us. So I thought prior to us making any decision moving forward, that we were going to do that first.
Yes, I do know that Scott Cook has been putting that together.
Okay.
So...
Everyone's...
We're just waiting to see how he gets that done and when he, he's able to...
Because that's going to address the how do we get there.
Yes.
And yeah, so, you know, just to clarify, I do believe that, that we, people are not making enough for the cost of living. I agree with you. However, how do we move from philosophical and ideological, and what I view as something right, how do we move this into sustainable policy and practices?
We need a strategy.
We need a strategy. So that's, that's what I want to see first.
Yeah. I'd like to just, I know I've spoken already, but interject a couple of things. And one is I think we should look hard at the model of unions because they do risky things like this by protecting each individual by sharing costs. Right, you know, they have stuff like grocery funds so that they can have strikes. And, you know, people, people can lose pay and not start, their families. And so there are, there are, not identically the same, but there could be some institutions that we don't have now that would, if our commercial communities participated in them, then changing the balance between incomes and costs would be possible.
Marsha, can I be back on that?
Yeah, yeah.
It's exactly what I was thinking too.
Good, well, I'm glad. And the other thing is on the, on the subject of the move to Frederick threat, just want to get this out and then I'll let Sean talk. But what?
Go ahead.
But, you know, on the move to Firestone thing, you know, we get one of our little data analysts to have a Google project where you get to spend 10 hours a week on it. They have figured out how much it's going to cost a small business to relocate to Firestone and how many years of their margins it's going to cost them. And then we can find out whether that's a real threat for, say, a restaurant or a bar. Because I'm kind of thinking it's probably not.
I would agree with you. I did some research on this and looked at the Bureau of Labor and Statistics about two sectors, sectors of the economy that we should be maybe looking at in regards to that and trying to promote. And that would be the construction trades aspect of unionization. And the second one, because of AI coming in, the technology of computer programming trades. Because both of those are one of the, are two of the main staples that we have going here in Longmont. We have, you know, a lot of construction going on. And we have a lot of high-tech businesses in Longmont and in the surrounding area. And we really need to focus on that. But I think that also ties into the idea of, you know, how do we get that, keep that workforce here? And that's maybe talking about need to use a little bit. And the way we regulate corporate investors purchasing our housing here so that we can get folks where it's, these, all these things seem to be tied in together. Your, our ability to house people is being stressed. Our ability to, to make sure that people don't have wage theft in regards to, and have consistency in the price of what it costs to maybe, from a labor standpoint, to employ people for construction and everything. Of course, the issue around, you know, technology, when we have such a huge population involved in that industry, we want to make sure that AI doesn't just wipe the mound someday and we are all out here going, you know, wringing our hands trying to figure out why, what we could have done. What we could have done is help do this. And then, you know, we have to start addressing that housing issue that, because they aren't just sitting here in silence, in isolation. They're, they're actually, you know, intertwined to the point where we have to figure out how do we make these, make it more doable for people? We're going to talk about helping them get across the fringe on whether it be the, you know, even in, even in a minimum wage situation, do we want to promote education too as a teacher? I kind of liked that idea that we have a training wage and also have a minimum wage for people who have certifications, like, you know, people that can work in daycares and stuff like that. And, you know, they all have some sort of first aid CPR or, you know, some sort of background checks and things like that to do the job. And so we, we need to maybe make sure that that's tied into the minimum wage.
Sean, how do they already do that? When people are hired, there's, you hire them on different levels of education and position.
Well, that's fine there. But I'm just saying maybe we need to help encourage what Marsha was saying. Or unionization in some of these areas might stabilize some things.
You need to have apprenticeships.
Yes.
Can I just say one more thing? I want the record to show and state that we know that the city is paying, our city employees are getting paid above their minimum wage, as which most businesses are paying above minimum wage unless they are high school students that we do know of. You know, as you mentioned, childcare workers, they are not getting paid what they need to be getting paid to take care of somebody else's kids. And we also know that, that the childcare industry is so extremely expensive that parents are staying, some parents have to stay home because they can't afford to take care, take their kids to daycare. And so you got that, you know what I'm saying? And we can't, I know that...
We can't solve all these problems.
We cannot. But it's all, it's all...
It's all intertwined. Yes, it is.
So two things that Marjorie Luchmin stated that I thought were very good points. Number one, the minimum wage allows that no one would ever fall below that. So some people are making more. A lot of people are making more in today's environment. But it just, it just ensures that nobody will fall below this level. You can't hire anybody below that level, whatever, whatever that is. And the other thing, what was the other thing? I just lost it. I'll think about it. So I just think that that's something to keep in mind when we, our point is that no one should ever fall below this level. I don't know that we have anything else to add other than let's think about it this year. Talk to Scott, talk to businesses. Let them know we're thinking about it so that they will, that, if in further conversations, council says, yes, absolutely, we need to raise the minimum wage next year, then we can go in strong and the city knows what we're going to do. It won't just be...
Put it to it about the people, is that what you...
No, not necessarily. The other thing that I was very frustrated with, with what the commissioners do is that we are a very different city than Boulder is. Boulder has a lot of money. We do not. We have a huge Latino population. We don't have the university bringing in dollars. So I feel that we do have a lower population, socioeconomic population that needs to have a minimum wage security. So that's all I have to say. We can also contact the neighborhood. You can say...
Well, yeah, NGLA, yeah. I'm not on it.
NGLA?
NGLA.
I'm going to go.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll make it. That, exactly. Oh, okay.
Starting this Thursday.
Did you know that? I guess I didn't have anything. So I flipped it so that people here were interested in the minimum wage discussion. So let's give Gordon...
So it's Shakita and Diane filling for coffee with council.
What's happening there?
Yeah, this is NGLA. You're having something special. So if minimum wage comes out, we'll take it. For the moment. So, and there is no public right to be heard here. So we should have a session with your fishbowl that you are putting together.
Thank you.
So I can, go ahead.
Oh, I'll excuse you. I just have a whole, oh, real interesting board thing going on. I, the reason I came back so early, because I've been always planning to be here next week for the final budget vote, was that Lucina Block said, I need somebody who's not afraid to tell the truth to the sustainability advisory board. Because they are doing things that are, are wanting to do things that are insensitive to the process that the city has to go through. And insensitive to our relationship with PRPA and insensitive to long-term objectives like building efficiency that the city has. And they've got really varied political people and then some of the usual suspects. And they've got really varied political people and then some of the usual suspects that are just trying to be inclusive, but they don't understand the problem well enough that, that, you know, you can't include matter and anti-matter and be inclusive. You've got to come down on one side or the other. And so I'm going to be there.
Okay.
Because, you know, if, if we don't, they're going to bring some resolutions to council that I think are.
What exactly?
Telling PRPA that they need to go back to the drawing board on the IRP after they've already submitted it to WAPA. And, you know, stuff like, stuff like that. And based on, on, you know, unscientific stuff. Harold actually had an interesting idea that maybe the board could be reorganized so that they, you know, so there was an energy segment that went that way and there, there was a code for, you know, building codes that went with, I don't know, climate and zoning, except that that's not advisory, so I don't know how that would work. But rather than put, because everything is sustainability, you know? I mean, we should have, we should have the, no, we should, no, I don't know how we use, when you want to reorganize something, you start, stop and think about how you're going to reorganize it, right? So all, have us a judge. But the thing is, the thing is that, that everything we do has those three pillars now, you know, people, planet, profit, or, you know, cost versus the, the environment versus affordability for the people, economic affordability for the people. And so maybe that function needs to be redistributed among different operational groups within the city. I don't know. And I have a question for Eugene.
We don't, it's just the capes where.
What?
Just the capes where staff isn't involved in our discussions.
Oh, you mean to can't talk?
No, just among us so that we outside, or inside, we're set, set, set.
Okay.
We can talk.
But then I will say.
Okay.
That we need clarification boiled down, maybe in a, in a rules matrix or stuff. Because one of the things is the sustainability board is trying to do is change their rules. What's doing that?
I'm sorry.
It's okay, I like it.
I'm sorry.
It's okay.
But it's.
Disruptive.
My apologies.
But, you know, so they're trying to change their rules and some of the rule changes that they want to make maybe are not allowed. Because, you know, some boards are statutory, some are chartered, and we have some things that are functioning like boards that aren't either of those things. And we need to get that straight away. So that is, that is a thing. The other thing is that the airport advisory board is actually being fairly tractable as a board themselves, you know, but they're, they're under a lot of pressure. And the airport is, you know, Levi's under a lot of pressure because there are more flight students than there have been for a long time. Everybody's mad about touch and goes. And in, you know, I've got dialogues going with a bunch of those, the people who are complaining, again, they mostly start out by writing to the whole council. So you at least read their letters and they're mostly saying, make it go away. And then they say, we're not taking no for an answer. Make it go away. And we need to, we need to do something, first of all, because they don't know, the public doesn't know what we are doing and what, and that we do have a vision for the airport and it's just taking longer than we wanted it to, but we have done things to promote a more sustainable vision for the airport. See there, the airport advisory board has a sustainability function and they're handling it properly. And I know that in November, there is the, the public discussion, but I feel like we should be, we should be helping the board and the public be good and ready for that. And so that's the other thing is, is that I'm doing this week is engaging with the airport advisory board.
Well, welcome back.
It's fun.
Um, no, transportation moved, moved their meeting to Monday, so I didn't go, I think because Deoll is out of the country. And I was out of the country for the other meeting, so I didn't attend LDDA or Longmont City City's Public at the, so, yeah, yeah.
That was really fun.
Yeah. So I'm sorry, I don't have any updates.
That's good.
So just piggybacking a little bit of what Marcia was saying, PRPA, you know, we've been, we're getting a lot of letters that they want a third-party oversight review of the IRP from Inrell. It's hard, it's difficult being, treading that line about the residents and, and PRPA because PRPA did a lot of work on the IRP. I think they did a lot of good work on the IRP. But it is the residents that put us in, you know, that decided we all needed to go to water and sit renewable. So for me, not listening to them totally is inappropriate because it is their city, it is their. So I am going to, at the next PRPA meeting, make a motion that we have Inrell look at it, only because I want to, I want to see if I get a second. And I also want to hear the discussion. Because we don't have, making the motion is the only way for, for the board to discuss it. Otherwise, we just shut down. And I think that we owe it to the residents. If it doesn't pass, and I don't think it will, then they have, then the residents from their elected representatives know how the elected representatives feel as a body. Because now all they're getting is from staff, you know, the reports from staff as to what the IRP is and what they did or whatever. They want and deserve, I think, from their elected officials to take the stand. And I think making a motion, having a discussion and voting on it, number one, I don't think I'm going to get a second. Number two, if I do, we discuss it, they would instead of us. And then, then it's dead. And that's what I, that's what I'm going to do. Because we can't just keep having the same conversations about the same thing. And then that would tell your board, your advisory board, Sustainability Board, this is where we stand. Your resolutions aren't going to do anything, this is it. So I, I like, I am a person that wants to put things to bed. We either are going to do it and talk about it forever or not. The other thing is Front Range Passage and Rail District is having a retreat, half-day retreats on Thursday and Friday. It's going to be very interesting and I, I'm excited about the way we're going and at some point, hopefully next week or the week after, we'll come back with some news that is specific about the, about the way we're going. We did go on that site selection dinner and the one, the one business rose when they gave us their update on their, I was very interested because the gentleman who spoke said that they work with cities on building TOD around railroads. They build railroads, they, they work with railroads. I really want to meet with him. And Erin Kostic said that she would definitely get his name for me because I forgot who it was. My memory. And so that, those are the things that I've been working on as well as I'm going to be the DDA sign off for NGLA, they're having a retreat on Saturday. So that's it. And I'm having a conversation with Dr., I just emailed Doug Rex to have a one-on-one with him, conversation. He is the director of Dr. Cog. Because we need a better, so here's my, here's my concern, and I'm going to talk to Dr. Cog about it, is that we are doing BRT on 287. And in our mayor's and commissioners coalition, the mayor of Broomfield brought up that BRT is supposed to go from Broomfield to Fort Collins. I do not want Boulder County planning on paying from Longmont to Fort Collins because that's Laramore. And we brought up that we should have them in our meetings because they're not in Dr. Cog, but they have their own NPO. So they should be able to get federal state grants through their own NPO and not have us working on that. That's been a frustration of mine for a long time, is that we in Boulder County are having the discussions about the, the BRT on the entire 287, but we aren't bringing in the people who are under a different financial structure to see how they're going to pay for it.
Don't know, I'd like to ask a question about the PRPA vote.
We're going to let all of us go around.
Okay.
Oh, about yours?
I'm going to pull up.
Do you want to have anything else?
No.
Okay.
Thank you, I'll send them up. So, so actually I have a couple of other updates that are apart from just my general board submissions. I do need to connect with Sandy to select a date, November 12th for a council, as the idea for a council and youth council meeting. I was going to think, I was thinking about that, but we're out at, we're out at National League of Cities. I'm like, that date just doesn't, so we talked about, so I said that I would connect with you and just kind of find out from council, are you all interested in setting some time aside? It could be prior to it's a council meeting, to meet with the youth, youth council.
Might be a good thing to do before.
Yeah, prior to, so we, we would just come in a little earlier on that date. So I'll work on, with Sandy on setting the dates for that, if you all are interested.
Kids talk, so make it 5:30.
So that was, that was the youth council, so we're working on dates. The, let's see, so in some of the updates with Arcab, you know, Charlie Penmetis is retiring, retired, retired. So, yes. So we are, you know, just changing up the, the guard, new leadership coming and stepping forward. So I can have, you know, so just introducing folks to Arcab and, and there's been some changes among the board. And so we're re, relooking at our subcommittee work on composting, zero waste, I believe there is another, I, I'm on the composting one, but we have different subcommittees that work on different tasks and different priorities. So what we're doing is we're kind of working in our subcommittees, I'm working on the composting one, and then we'll, we come back together and relook at our priorities and direction that Arcab wants to go with advocacy to be county commissioners for policy in future. Arts in public places, the St. Stevens Church on Maine did, or is being worked on right now for their, they need a new roof. And Arts in Public Places had some artwork there. I know the suggestion was, oh, do you want to throw tarps on it? But they actually had to move, go in and move the statues. So I know that did, that did impact cost to, for removal of these large statues, connect with the artists. I guess there was one artist that had only recently put their artwork up there and then they had to dismantle it and take it back. So the board decided to go ahead and let them have an extended year of keeping that rather than going through the process of selection, that they're just going to extend and honor that, that contract. So that, I think, cost, what was it, 1,500, I think, off the top of my head? I'm trying to remember. So that, that was, there were some fiscal impacts to that. The other thing is that Arts in Public Places is, they've had to pitch in $1,000 to, excuse me, oh, to, to do protection of the other, the rest of the artwork. As well as, and so what, so I, I asked that they had was, as these projects start getting put into place and things go down the pipeline, if they could just be well aware, because they would not have had the artist put up that recently installed piece, had they known that they were going to do the construction. So they could kind of let them know further ahead of time. And then it also looks like Historic Preservation or the Historical Society and LD, LDDA was splitting the cost on the St. Stevens restoration. So I, I just kind of wanted to throw it out there. I was just, and this is my wonder, is why, why is, you know, the Historical Society, they don't, they don't have a lot of means to be able to shell out that kind of money? So that was, that was just my wondering, but I just wanted to throw out there publicly. The other thing is that with the homeless regional group, we are meeting tomorrow. And so we are looking at, I'm going to make the suggestion that we continue with our meetings. Tomorrow's supposed to be the last meeting, but I feel like we're nowhere near done. We're only now getting a sense of what we want our priorities to be. So whether it be advocacy, local, state, or federal level, so looking at policy, support the creation of affordable housing, or provide supportive services. So there's so much stuff that's interwoven that I think to, to prioritize or work within silos, it's, it's going to be next to impossible. So I, I feel like, I'm going to ask that we have further, you know, carry our regional group to, to meet more. You know, one of the, I did take back feedback that I heard from a couple of council people on what direction we wanted to be going and we're trying to itemize what everybody had said. I, I think there is some concern around the 1B funding and how that's going to be allocated and, and put into place. So as we look at regional groups, I ask that we have some feedback or some training on looking at how we set policy through an equity lens. So making sure that what we do or what Superior does is aligning maybe with practices we're already doing with the Ziniya project, with the streets, with wraparound services. So we want to ensure that each municipality isn't doing something that's going to contradict what the mission of our group has decided to go with. And then, yeah, I think, you know, we're looking at advocacy and interweaving support and creation of affordable housing as well as the supportive services, because one can't happen without the other. Last Friday, and then with the Core and Needs Team, and this was another one that kind of goes into the unhoused, so we had a really good meeting. We heard from, Andy Easter, sorry. Okay, from the Core, speaking about funding, staffing challenges. So staffing challenges doesn't just mean not being able to hire somebody. It's the time it takes from hiring someone, making sure they're well-trained, and then they're able to get out on, out on the field. So it takes a long time, you know, up to a year it can be. So, you know, we want to make sure that we have the right people in these positions and looking at what Michael Helmster, Helmster is doing with acquiring grants for the sustainability of the Core and Needs Team. Currently, let's see, I just received, just received the grant. And it was a big grant, or they, they just sent it in, that will allow us for, to put in money for FTE and, sorry, my notes are all over the place. There was a lot that they were doing. So with FTE, making sure we have those clinicians out there and case manager. And it was through the Behavioral Health Administration, so it's providing $4 for the budget. So, yeah, I think that was it, they're going to be presenting at the state or at the federal level, so that was really exciting. And I think what we're doing with our Core and Needs Team is really paving the way for how we. we look at public safety and policing in the future, and how it ties so closely with work that our nonprofits are doing, like Hope Shelter and mental health, mental health partners.
Well, you know, that kind of leaves any money, but I'll ask you a thing.
Okay.
Uh, so it's been a few months since we've done one of these.
I know.
Housing and Human Services met in July, they did not meet in August, and they met in September, is what I was talking about. In July was when they made the initial request to city council to consider the Downpaying Assistance Program, which obviously council get a direction on. So after that, they'd really been gearing up, because they're now in the thick of their funding requests hearings, and I believe after screening, 53 organizations were granted hearings. And so they, they've gone through a couple weeks so far, and they've got about three or four months on that. Planning and zoning was off last month, the last thing they heard in August was the Westview Concept Plan Amendment, which we've already, we've already voted on. And then tomorrow night, they will be considering the remand of the McDonald's decision that we sent back to them.
Okay.
Should be interesting.
Okay, so consortium of the cities, yeah, at the end of the month, and it's, so that it's not too distant in our thinking process about homelessness, and Christine Pacheco gave me a, an hour's PowerPoint to present to them. And so that, we're talking about the minimum wage, and some of our Boulder County updates. As far as the Calhoun House, I filled in during the summer to do that, and they had a tea just about a week or so ago, and then they had, they're also still doing, they're getting their video for the, hopefully they can get it to the Colorado Experience on PBS. They're doing some voiceovers right now. As far as, as the golf course, they haven't met in two months. I guess, no news is good news, so they're supposed to meet this month. And so, you probably have heard about something if you haven't. And you all got the updates in regards to the second quarter with Longmont Public Media. And so, that, and then just last night, we had the Parks and Open Space, we talked about, this is the thing that is going to come up in, I emailed Jim Golden about it, and they're going to go to a new system, or when they charge people at the door, if you use cash or, or check, you'll, to, let's say, get into the pool or into the ice cream, it'll be whatever the price is, but if you use the credit card, it'll be 3%, and so it'll be, let's say, $7 and whatever 3% is on that. And, and that's something that I emailed Jim Golden about to see, does somebody have, if they don't have, let's say, a pass, would they have a ACH or some sort of thing like that? I, I also include David Bell on this, so that he could, I guess, he's the one that's kind of the point person on this to explain what's going on, but there's a concern from the board that maybe that would, would raise a few folks' blood pressure in regards to that point of sale. We were losing literally $120,000 a year in covering that, that, that charge at the bank. So it's, it's, you know, it's, it's, you know, it's, it's an employee, we're a couple employees, and so, so we have to think about that, and so we, they're looking at going in that direction, where at point of sale, when you use a credit card or debit card, be added to it. So that's it, that's gonna be a big deal. Then, of course, Timber talked about park health, and of course, we got an email today and I thought we were, you know, we have some, some degrees of how things wear out and playgrounds and stuff like that. And then, since Marsha's been out, I have attended the last two airport advisory board meetings, and in the meantime, they had their, their mayor show on September 16, 17, 14, but that seemed to be quite the success. Of course, I, you know, the minor ones, one or two issues are still moving, they're be up for another decision. And, so, those are the findings.
Great question.
So, yes, PRPA, during the IRP, there was a lot of public pressure for PRPA to do an all dispatchable IRP, I'm sorry, RFP, and they, PRPA didn't want to do it, and were saying, "Aero derivative turbine, aeroverbative turbine." But then they did yield to public pressure and do, issue an all dispatchable RFP, but then when the RFP came, IRP came around, aeroverbative turbine. What did the board consider in between, or were you presented with a decision, or was the procurement completely internal? Do you even, do you know how many alternative bids they received, and were they all for gas turbines, or were they something else?
You know, I don't, the reason I'm hesitating is that the time between I was on the board and Ryan was still on the board, I don't know if those RFPs came in, I don't know how many they got.
So the, yeah, they.
But I think they came in before I was on board.
You know, the all dispatchable RFP controversy was after you were already mayor, second term, in fact, I think.
No.
Well, we could go back and look, but it definitely wasn't Ryan.
Do you want me to go see?
Yes, please.
That was the ask.
Okay, is there anything else, councilor, a little bit?
There's seven.
No, we have about two minutes.
Yeah.
Is it seven?
It is seven.
It is six, nine.
6:59.
11:20.
Thank you.
22:00.
Okay. We are disbanded.